Welcome to School 51. I'm Stuart School and I want to thank our principal that I saw here before, Jonathan Robbins, for allowing us here and to her lovely school. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to rural community newspapers, The Star Letter and Cablevision of Elizabeth on Monday, November 18th, 2013. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this November 21st, 2013 meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask that you silence the sound on your electronic devices. Since it is legally mandated that these meetings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time out to join us this evening and thank you for your interest in Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for the citizens to address the board this evening. Participants for the public portion must sign in one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting so that they may all have the opportunity to speak. The sign issue states the name, the address, the telephone number, and the reason that the person wants the call now, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. I want to ask our Board Secretary to now take the roll call.
Patless, Kalela, Castillo, Gonzalez, Nasta, Hadda, Herrera, Trujillo, Montero.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I want to call Dr. William Green to do the indication. Federal, may he please stand.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. O Lord, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us and we pray for your presence here tonight as we make decisions on behalf of our students. Dear God, we pray that your continued blessings be upon this school district. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The presentation of colors will be presented by Admiral William M. Polte, Junior Leadership, Junior ROTC. Now to present our pledge of allegiance, we'll have Kayla Noel, 11th grade student at the Alexander Preparatory Academy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now to present the Star Spangled Banner is Elizabeth High School Marching Band. Now to ladies and our pledge of ethics, we have our 11th grade student Maritza Rosa from the Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools professional standing community, I pledge to understand that this school community is special place. This year is definitely when someone else is sitting in front of the world's attention and not interrupting. Steven and Colin always can use proper language. That is so great for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by initiating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you, Maritza. You may all proceed. Let me now present our four police video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve their high level.
In Elizabeth Public Schools, we believe actively creating and implementing challenging standards that define the level of cognitive complexity of expected learning. Such standards are applied at all levels in the district, including classroom activities, instructional plans, course content, student work, assessments, both summative and formative, who will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue their post-secondary education. It is through such an education that the achievement gap is eliminated. Elizabeth Public Schools students will strengthen the nation's economic, intellectual, and social impact on the world. In order to do this, we will ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, is inspired to participate fully in their educational experience and cultivate a true passion for learning.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement.
Elizabeth Public Schools teachers make a positive difference visible not only to higher test scores, graduation rates, and attendance, but by championing the love of learning at every opportunity.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
A world-class educator has high expectations of themselves and their students, is willing to challenge and be challenged, and pursues learning opportunities for continuous growth. Such an educator sees the potential in every child with no exception. They teach with passion and make an effort to ensure that every student reaches their full potential.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
Effective leaders are conduits for student success, inspiring Elizabeth students to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care. Effective leaders have passion among them, earning the trust and loyalty of those around them. It is their incredible passion and energy that engage, inspire, and motivate others to achieve excellence.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and reward result-driven leaders.
The goal is only excellent results, and effective leaders do not tolerate anything less than excellence. Our leaders will demonstrate and honor those contribute to and enable those around them to increase student achievement.
We believe that high performance standards produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
Elizabeth Public Schools is dependent on its internal and external networks working in collaboration to ensure high student achievement. The internal team members include the teachers, staff, and community members that directly affect students' achievements. The external team includes the community at large, partnerships with non-profit organizations and universities, faith-based communities, and states and national education agencies.
We will build a high-performance team that achieves excellence.
The end result is a sustainable system that supports networks of people committed to excellence through education. Our students will leave Elizabeth Public Schools with a passion for learning that will lead them through a lifetime of fulfilled dreams.
Let me introduce to properly thank the Junior ROTC who didn't properly exit. Once again, let's give them a round of applause for the Junior ROTC. Today, we're honored and blessed to have some great performances that are going to be presented here tonight. Our first performance tonight is the song "Set Fire to the Ring" by Adele, and this will be formed by our business, our Board Secretary, Put Kennedy off, sorry. Cross it out, buddy. This will be, ah, cross it. This will be formed by Jacqueline Fresco. She's 8th grade student of Alora School, number 12. Jacqueline is also the winner of this year's Elizabeth Got Talent, and she is incredible. Let's give her a round of applause.
(SINGING) I closed my heart in a despair who was so green. Oh God, now don't touch me until you just come and heal me. My hands to show, but my knees were far too weak. Stay in your arms without falling to your feet. What's that inside to you that I never knew, never knew? All the things you say they were never true, never true, and the games you play you would always win, always win. But I said, "I am to the rain." Watch your progress, I told you. Well, it hurt when I cried 'cause I heard it screaming out your name, your name. With you, I could stay there, close my eyes till you're here. Forever, you and me together, nothing is better. What's inside to you that I never knew, never knew? All the things you say they were never true, never true, and the games you play you would always win, always win. But I said, "I am to the rain." Watch your progress, I told you. Well, it hurt when I cried 'cause I heard it screaming out your name, your name. I said, "I am to the rain." And I threw up into the rain. Well, it felt something like, 'cause I knew that that was the last time, the last time. Sometimes I wait up by the sun, that all you thought must be waiting for you. Enough, and we're already over. I can't help myself, look before you. I said, "I am to the rain." Watch your progress, I told you. Well, it hurt when I cried 'cause I heard it screaming out your name, your name. I said, "I am to the rain." And I threw up into the rain. Well, it felt something like, 'cause I knew that that was the last time, the last time. Oh, 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 baby, oh.
Even our Board Secretary couldn't match that. If Christina Aguilera was here or CeeLo Green, those cheers would turn around in a second. Great job, that night. That was fantastic. We got great talent here in Elizabeth, and Al, I couldn't be any prouder of the young men and women that are standing up here before you tonight. In all that goes on in this world with all the bad and terrible news and tragedies, we have something, just something so wonderful here tonight. Our young men and women of our band who won their third time National Peak, uh, Repeat Jam National Championships. And we are so honored to have them here tonight to perform, not only for all of us here, but for everyone at home watching. The next few selections that will be performed are from the championship Elizabeth High School Marching Band's field show program, which earned their national and championship titles. They're going to perform from their program, Descarga Cubana, featuring "A Night in Tunisia" by Dizzy Galupsi, "Two Meantos Delay" by Caesar Portillo de la Luz, and "Tenga" by Piquito Díaz Rivera. We're going to ask that the marching band that are performing here for us tonight, that they remain in the room for the next few presentations that will follow your presentations here tonight. So thank you and congratulations to each and every one of you. Now to present our presentation on behalf of Elizabeth Board of Education is our Board Member, Mr. Polperber.
Good evening. Before I give out the award, I just want to say personally, congratulations to you all. I've been following what you've been doing throughout the year and I'm very, very, very proud for all your accomplishments and I hope you keep it up. And this is-
Just enjoy it. It's one of those times in life where you're not going to be able to repeat it and just take it in and enjoy it some more. So congratulations to all of you.
So tonight, we're proud to recognize the Elizabeth Group 5A State National Champions, the Elizabeth-
Now, we have two presentations or several presentations to make. Before we do that, just keep in mind this, that today, this is a very tight quarter for this outstanding band. They performed this, and people have known that they performed all these songs while moving in, uh, in the march field that they, that they do. And I know this was done at the MetLife Stadium. It's an incredible, incredible video to watch. If you haven't seen it, I guess you go on our YouTube or on our website and watch them performing these, uh, these songs on the field while they're moving in cadence. Absolutely outstanding. We couldn't be prouder of each and every one of you for your outstanding performances and making this so proud of everyone here in the city of Elizabeth for bringing home the national championship to the town. Thank you all so much. Now, to make our presentation on behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education is our board member, Mr. Paul Perret.
Good evening. Before I give out the awards, I just want to say personally, congratulations to you all. I've been following what you've been doing throughout the, uh, the year, and I'm very, very, very proud for, for all your accomplishments, and I hope you keep it up. Just enjoy it. It's one of those times in life where you're not going to be able to forget, and just take it in and enjoy it simultaneously. So, congratulations to all of you. So, tonight, we're proud to recognize the U.S.B. Group 5A State National Champions, the Elizabeth High School Marching Band. These two talented, dedicated young men and women, and the professionals who lead them in their high caliber performances have achieved not only another undefeated season, not only 2013 state national championship titles, but they have now earned the distinct achievement of having earned these titles for three years in a row. Elizabeth Public Schools High School Marching Band has much to be proud of, and they should know that they have made all of us proud of their spectacular achievements. We thank these students for their dedication and for sharing their talents. In addition, we thank the talented professionals, the many instructors and technical assistants who work with our band's students throughout the year to perfect the students' skills. I would now like to ask that our band section leaders come up front to join us here, please? So, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our two Elizabeth High School Marching Band co-directors, Mr. Benjamin Schwartz and Mr. Wayne Dillon. These are the gentlemen that are in charge, and they've been doing this for so many years, and they do such a wonderful job. And there's nothing that I can say that but thank you from the bottom of my heart and from the, the team here at the Elizabeth Public Schools. Thank you so much for your work and dedication. And obviously, we can't forget, that is our dual supervisor for music. Please come up also. So, we would like to present to the Elizabeth High School Marching Band this state and national championship banner, which shows that they're indeed the best in New Jersey and the best in America. I also want to let everyone know that this band will be performing this year at the Super Bowl, the International Event for the Super Bowl. Which will be at MetLife on February 2nd, I believe, and they will be there all day. There's going to be many events that they're going to be performing in. So, again, I mean, I can't be happier for, for what you guys have experienced and have experienced already, so, congrats again. Only be a few million people watching, so, no, no, don't be nervous.
We have one more band presentation, and it'll be presented by our board member, Commissioner Mr. Fernando Nastar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the band once again. You guys did an outstanding job. The Board of Education would like to take a moment to recognize an individual member of this exceptional marching band, who in addition to contributing to the marching band's exceptional achievements, has also been selected for the individual honor of being selected as guitarist for the 2013 U.S. Army All-American Marching Band. Elizabeth High School Senior John Mesa will receive an all-expenses-paid trip to San Antonio, Texas this year, this January, to prepare for the nationally televised All-American Bowl football game halftime show. The U.S. Army All-American Marching Band recognizes the top 125 high school senior marching musicians and color guard members from across the country, showcasing their talents during the largest celebration of high school football in America, the U.S. Army All-American Bowl. You should be very proud of your achievement. John Mesa, please come up and accept the certificate of excellence.
Of course, they did an outstanding and wonderful job, and behind a wonderful team like this sometimes are the unsung heroes, and those are your parents, your support staff, your chaperone. Let's give them all a round of applause. I know how much hard work and how much traveling and how much time goes into this, and we thank each and every one of you for participating and being the mouth for this just incredible moment, for all the children here tonight, but for how wonderful it is for our city to be recognized and to be honored with having this wonderful talent of young men and women. Thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you all so much. One quick final presentation before we dismiss the entire band. It'll be by our board member, Ms. Anthony Tannen.
Good evening, everyone. And for our final presentation, we would like to recognize another group of dedicated individuals. This time, team members along with family and friends who gave their time, talent, and in some cases, risked their very limbs to win the first annual One Fest 13 softball tournament. The champions are Almora School Number 12.
Once again, we're going to thank you all for coming and participating tonight. We're going to take a five-minute recess now. Once again, thank you all for being here tonight.